Great. Good evening, welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for November 24th. We'll start the meeting with a pledge allegiance. All rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The board is just coming out of a pick-work-and-manifest review. First order of business is review of items for consent. In the consent folder this evening, there is minutes from the November 10th meeting. Accounts payable manifest for $66,329.41. Payroll manifest for $57,229.79. And then veterans' tax credit application approvals for four. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the items for consent. Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries forward, zero, zero. Next is up is items for all the business. Anything else for... Anybody want to add to the agenda or topics you want to cover tonight? Hearing none. The agenda is, guess where it is what it is. Next is ministry report, all business, warrant articles.
Right.
Mr. Pinciero is supposed to be here, right?
Yes.
We're going to talk, we'll bring him up first so we get him out of here early.
Mr. Pinciero.
Jack.
You're on.
If we can get him out early, it'd be great.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, that's...
Well, no. Mr. Pinciero, please. Mr. Road Agent, sit down, please. Have a seat. Comfortable?
So, I'll set the stage quickly here while you get organized here. I think we had two scenarios, I guess, that we had suggested. One was the flat amount, sort of the approach that was done this year. That, you know, I think this year we asked for $170,000. It got a 69% yes vote. And then we listed some sample roads, as well as the other roads, as necessary. And you recall the road agents stretched the monies that we had between block grant in the budget and this to get as much done as possible. So, we have one scenario that reflects that. And then I think the direction the board opted for last time was, came out of the conversation that we had had, you know, our short-term plan for the major roads that need to get done over the next several years. And these are the major roads. We have smaller roads that also have low scores that we are trying to get done as funds allow. We have about $2.2 million worth of work on the major roads. The suggestion here was to break out into three separate articles. So, what you'll see here is the 1.1, 1.2, 1.3 showing. And the way that it was written was, they'll say 1.1, used toward the cost repairs to Pinecrest, as well as other roads as necessary. 133, 969 for Blue Jay, 164, 087 for Pilgrim. That was sort of the take-home. I think reflecting on this a little bit after the meeting, I think we had a... I know Jack and I had talked about it shortly after the meeting, had a little bit of concern about the difference in approach by listing them all versus one size together. And I think that's probably a good point to hand back to you, Jack, to talk about. A little bit like how it worked for you this year and what your preference may be.
Well, last year, if you remember right, we had planned on doing all of Stark and... There were a few others that we were... Robbins Road and those different roads. But we had a major issue happen on one in the middle school. So, we had to jockey the money around. We got into the middle school completed. We got half of Stark completed. We got all of Maskwash completed. And it was just a way of manipulating the money into the best place for a best price for what we would get. Been concentrating on just feet of roads at this point. What I would ask is, instead of taking specific ones like Blue Jay, not Blue Jay, but Pilgrim in a warrant article. Pilgrim is bad, I agree, but we have other roads that are even worse. Ness and Keg East, it's dirt at the end. As you go over the hill, start down the hill, it's straight there. I mean, there's no asphalt left. What I'd like to see is, if we were going to add any money, is to add $30,000 to the 170. That would be a $200,000 warrant article. Pool it together and possibly what we could get done would be four sections and then possibly one other smaller road, possibly. That would give us right around $400,000 to expend. And we could do whatever is really, really necessary. You don't know what's going to happen. We don't really know what the prices are. We go out to bid next month, by the 1st of January. I wanted to make sure that I had numbers before we went to deliberative. So, you guys would have real, real contract numbers.
So, Jack, you're asking us to... You're looking for $400,000 in total. That's the block grant, it's already in the operating budget.
Right.
And then $200,000 is a single warrant, similar as we did last year versus...
Adding third.
We've broken it up to three because we thought all the projects were of merit. I know going out for three different warrants for three different projects kind of, you know, I'm not sure there's an issue either way. I mean, I think people will vote for it either way, but... So, you don't want, you just want $400,000 in road budget.
Right.
And the roads...
I have committed that $400,000 to the two... Basically, the projects you've already talked about. Blue Jay for one, Pinecrest from Mussalo up to Hillcrest. Stark Lane, which needs to be to keep us on plan, which was part of last year's plan, where we had to take a little money and move it into another project. And Ness and Keg, which is a must. The easterly end of Ness and Keg. I don't know if anybody's been down that way, you know? Advised you maybe take a ride?
From Albuquerque and...
Yeah, take a left on Ness and Keg.
Right.
It's over the cul-de-sac.
East from Albuquerque.
Right. It's bad.
Yeah, it's wicked bad. And we have others too, but these are... Blue Jay Way is a disaster. I don't know if you've...
When was the last time that was done?
Twenty-five years, right?
It hasn't been done in...
Oh, God, since it was built.
Really? Original pavement?
Oh, yeah.
A lot of our roads are like that.
When I first came in as road agent, there was a section of it was so bad, we did probably about 700 or 800 feet of it just to keep the road together. And it's just getting worse. Every day, it's getting worse. So, with that money, once we get the high numbers from the bids, prices of oil, as you said, are going down. Hopefully, you'll see the asphalt price drop a little bit. I don't know if that's a fact or not, but it could be.
Hopefully.
Maybe we can get more done than, you know, we're projecting it. The taxpayer has to realize that we're not... We have been consistently not asking the taxpayer. Last year was the first time. We've always done it all with block grant. But it's become so overwhelming, and I think they realized it too. They voted for it without any problem whatsoever. So, adding $30,000 to it, we spent the money where we said we would spend it. We didn't divert anywhere else.
The only thing I'd... You were able to successfully get all the projects done last year, almost by June.
Plus.
And that leaves a lot of months available for getting other roads fixed. If the voters are okay with additional funding, I mean, the voters will vote on it one way or the other. I'm not sure why we want to run away from presenting three different warrants and have them voted up or down either way. I mean, I know that... I was okay with the original warrant, which was, it was all together. It was 233 was the funding. And I know there was a lot of discussion around breaking it apart and letting people, you know, up or down either projects. I personally will do whatever you want to do from that perspective. If that's all you want, then we'll do that, but...
That's what I would prefer. I think that we can get a lot more done. If the prices come in right, we should be able to get a lot done. These are the four projects that... Some are part of what you were referring to. The only one that really isn't in there is Pilgrim.
Right.
And I think we're going to put an undue burden on the taxpayer by asking... They may decide, yeah, okay, we'll do Pilgrim. But I don't really think Pilgrim necessarily has to be done right at this moment. There are other street roads that are even worse.
Well, when you look at your scoring, I think Pilgrim is still way up there in the score. So, why would we not want to address the more troublesome roads? I mean, Pilgrim's travel a lot.
Yeah, but somewhere along the way, you've got to start doing some of these sidewalks that are in terrible shape.
And you also have to get the side roads that you can deal with for $40,000 before they become the $140,000 project. So, that's the juggle when you look at the scoring list, is that if there are places where the big-ticket projects, you're able to save a little bit of money, we go back to that list and say, where are the things that are on the bubble? You don't just keep doing the worst roads. You've got to grab a couple before they slip.
That's why we did Maskwash last year, was one that we could just overlay. It wasn't necessary to grind it.
No. When you say overlay, is that a maintenance shim?
Yep. Well, it's a shim and overlay. So, we were fortunate that Ricky gives us a pretty good price when he does that. So, we can take our little pool of money at the end, after we've expended the big bucks, and take that little pool and go, hey, here's one I need to do. You can overlay. We'll go pick an overlay and do that.
So, Jason, the warrant that's being suggested by Jack and yourself is the one that's above the 1.2, 1.1, 1... Yeah, the one that's above 1.1 and 1.2 and 1.3, right?
Right. Recognizing that that ends up still being a lower number than the cumulative effect of all of the others, you know? And that's, and honestly, that's the struggle we have. I mean, you know, I look at the 2.2 million, and then I look at the road plan, you know, that has $5 to $6 million of work overall, and, you know, think, you know, if the voters would support it. That said, three separate things ends up being kind of a high-stakes way to ask for it. And I think it also sets up a real issue of if something elapses over winter, where we need to shift to a higher priority. Well, I voted for the Pinecrest article, and you didn't touch Pinecrest this year.
Right.
You know? Even though we may have the flexibility in the way the article's written, I just think that's kind of a scary... It's a scary box to put us in to try to deal with the unknown.
But we had that happen this year, though. We shifted some money.
At the northern end, the ferry brought to my attention. I didn't think it was so bad. And we found 14 feet of clay under that road. It would have been continuously going like this had we not dug it up and done it right. Unfortunately, we had both ends done. So, it was because we had that little blocks of money that we could spend it there. And it needed to be done. It truly did need to be done. It was a washboard.
So, in a sense, this is like meeting in the middle, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Basically, yeah. It just, I feel it's a more logical approach. It just makes more sense to me, and that's just the way I feel about it. I don't know how the taxpayer feel.
Well, the only thing is, we're removing the ability of the taxpayers to say one way or the other. We're going back to a single warrant.
Well, they are... If they don't vote for... They're not in favor if they don't vote for the 200, right?
Right, but that means... Right, but they may have been in favor of one of the other smaller projects. That's the risk.
We're referring to 130, I mean, 170, and adding $30,000 to that and asking for that $200,000.
Right.
And we'll have four projects done, instead of the opportunity of losing that 170, is what I'm thinking, and only getting two projects done.
I think the other thing that I just would suggest here too is that if we had a different outcome from this past year's town meeting, that would cause us to rethink our approach, I think we would be rethinking our approach. With nearly 70% yes vote on this one, that's a pretty clear message that, you know, this approach is okay. So, at some point, then, you know, then, I hate to try something, to try a new twist after, you know, it was successful this year.
Well, the only new twist is, we were asking for more money.
Yeah.
A lot more money, because we had that, that was the scope of the projects that we thought were critical or a priority.
Okay. Yeah. And, you know, and it was a big step. I mean, and, you know, remember, we sat here last year, and everybody kind of swallowed hard and said, really, we're going to ask for $170,000? Remember that? So...
Right. All right, so what's the board's pleasure? I mean, we haven't voted on these one way or the other. We've asked Jason to rewrite them as three separate warrants. That's what we have as the 1, 1 through 1, 3. And then we have the one above it, which is what they're recommending.
If the road agent in my line wants the $200,000, I'd go that way.
That's, would be my suggestion too.
I agree.
I agree.
All right. I'll make a motion that we approve the warrant as presented, which reads as...
Keep going, I was supposed to do the same thing.
To see if the town will vote to raise the appropriate sum of $200,000 for the purpose of road pavement improvement projects. It is anticipated these funds will be used towards the cost repairs of Pinecrest Road, Blue Jay Way, as well as other roads as necessary. This is a non-lapsing appropriation per RSA 327, colon, quote, non-lapse into improvements.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. So, this warrant, we'll go forward this warrant, and you can get rid of the 1 through 3 version.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jack, for everything.
Appreciate it.
Hold on, before he leaves...
Oh, I hear the snow's going away. It's not going to snow now.
That's what I heard.
I'm hoping. I'm praying.
When we heard you... No, right, Brent?
Yeah.
We have...
We're in that big band between 6 and 12. You're in that too.
We're putting the plows on tomorrow.
Yeah. We do have two other articles that are near the highway department, the striping machine and the 102 intersection. So, you know, I didn't really set you up to talk about those, but, I mean, I have information, you know, so if there are any other questions that...
We already approved the striping machine, right?
Yeah, I think we're okay on all of these. I just want to kind of make sure...
And the Route 102 intersection, I mean, that's obviously, that came out of us being asked to do the research, and now we're coming back saying, if we're going to do this, this is the cost. I know the engineering company gave us their sort of recommendations.
Rough idea.
Right.
Well, they gave a rough idea of the cost. They didn't give us a...
Just the engineering cost.
In the folder, there is the drawings...
If you go to the, if you click through on the document itself that I've provided for articles there, there's the letter dated November 12th from North Point Engineering that goes through the full scope of work, construction estimates, and the like.
And it's in the...
And there may be a hard copy I put in there too, but the electronic copy's linked right in on the warrant article thing, so...
I do have a map that was forwarded from them if somebody wants that.
Yep. I got page cut, it's a...
It just shows it coming off Cutler going to Gary Road.
So, yeah, we have...
Looked at a lot of different scenarios, but...
Yeah, no, I think the report we originally reviewed...
Yeah, I gave you guys the report a few weeks ago. Basically, all that happened was engineer tightened up a few things. His estimated cost went up a little bit. So, I kept the numbers kind of, I kept the warrant article where we talked about the 160 level. That is, that had been the middle of his range. It is now the bottom of his range. But...
Don't worry about it.
We'll figure that out if that time comes.
Right. Does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Pinciero?
Thank you, Jack.
Jack, thanks for coming in. Keep doing a great job.
I did not have to get that going.
I just wanted to...
But I can't get to it.
No problem.
There's no way to get around the fence. I've got to cut a road through on that right hand side to get to that.
Can't go through the fence? Just one thing. There was a vote a couple of weeks ago about the appointment of the road agent, and I voted against that. So, just to clarify why my vote was against that, it was the process and not the candidate. So, I wanted to make sure people understood that my vote was in regards to the process that was being used by the Board of Selectmen at the time. The candidate, Mr. Pinciero, I think has done an outstanding job as road agent. He's probably the best road agent the town has had, at least in my recollection, which doesn't go back to that.
No, not that far.
But it's, I will say that your job you are doing is outstanding, and thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Second. Actually, I appreciate all your votes. Thank you.
Have a good one, Jack.
Good night.
All right, Jason, where do you want to pick it up?
Let me back up just a second in general on these warrant articles. I've written kind of my first stab at most of these, actually in full warrant article form, as you can see. Couple of them I need to continue refining. The process, like we do most years, is they'll run through council, they'll run through DRA. I should also point out that DRA has now implemented a new website for tracking warrant articles, their review, and all of our forms that we file, which will make hopefully that form preparation and distribution a lot easier. I saw some of it at the conference two weeks ago and have been playing around with it. So, that's sort of happening in the background on all of this, just so, you know, we have kind of these new tools. And Karen and Terry Brand and I will be using those through the course of the year to get everything to DRA. Allegedly, this will make their, all of their reviews and tax rate setting faster and more efficient.
Right.
So, that's the backstory on some of these. So, you know, there's a couple I've kind of mailed in the writing on. You'll see I gave up on one app because I couldn't figure out how I wanted to tackle it. Fire Department Utility Vehicle is probably a good point to start, since that's at the top of the list. You had asked for some information on a new vehicle there. So, we got a price of about $38,000 for new, and we need to add about $2,000 onto the cost of that vehicle for our own setup, for conversion, fit up with radios, lights, et cetera. So, we're looking at about $40,000 for a replacement utility vehicle. This was based on a Ford F-550.
Now, is this, that just the chassis?
It has, it has some of the other prep associated with it, mainly just the chassis. If you go over to, if you click on it, my notes on the side in the actual document, I have...
It's on the soap, yeah.
So, again, I mean, you know, I think this is the point that the issue that the chief and I first came with this was, we were less excited about buying new and thought, okay, if there was a way that we could have some funds set aside, so if the right used vehicle or the right state surplus vehicle came up, we would be in a position to act on it. The difficulty is, I can't sit here today and say, this is the vehicle, this is the cost. So, you know, which is where I think our conversation last time was, well, what's it going to cost to go all-new? So, that's kind of the dilemma that we're in. Here's your all-new price.
Have you looked at state surplus, see if there's any vehicles available?
Yeah, at the moment, at the moment, we saw there's a vehicle that may, that's actually a pass-through through federal.
Had an auction not too long ago, and a whole boatload of vehicles went out of there.
Yeah, I mean, if we...
Probably the pickings aren't...
If we can find a state surplus vehicle, I mean, we can get, you know, we can be probably in and out of this whole process for, you know, 15 or less. You know, depending on if you find the right thing, get the right setup, what's it going to take to convert it over? The, you know, the truck we just bought for Jack, which is, you know, overkill for this, I mean, we spent under $10,000 on.
Well, it's a different class truck, though, too.
Right.
A 550 is, you know, I would think 550s is a little harder to come by that are in good shape.
There's a big distance, again, you know, if you find the right thing, it's there. Again, you know, sometimes the federal surplus piece comes up, but it also, you know, I can't tell you what it's going to be today. It may not be there tomorrow. If you put it on the warrant in March and the voters pass it, we may not get something to September. New is known, but, you know, new is looking at probably some additional funds that, you know, you may want to apply there, you may want to defer there. I mean...
I guess my question on that is, the pickup truck now at the fire department just got that new skid unit that's on the back, which overloads the chassis itself. So, is that skid unit going to come off that to go on this?
That's the theory, is that if we can swap that unit over, we have that unit, it's the right unit, it's nicely built for what we need.
And that was just all we done, that the skid unit?
Yeah, that was just done this year.
This year, I think.
Yeah, was this year? I think it was this year.
So, it was all rotted and stuff, they replaced all the...
They did a beautiful job on it, so that's what I was asking.
Now, that's to hold a tank for water for forest fires, correct? Now, let me ask you, a 550 is going to be a dual rear wheel. Is that going to be feasible, be treacherous through a forest?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would think so.
Just go fast enough to get there, right?
Is it, I'm assuming, is it a four-wheel drive truck too, or no?
Yes.
Well, there'll be, yeah. Usually compromise your clearance, that's all.
Yeah. That's true.
Hate to spend 40 if we could spend 15, I'll tell you that.
Well, I'm assuming if the voters passed it, and we suddenly come up with a deal for 15, the remaining just falls to the general offsets anyway.
Yeah, it falls to the fund balance, exactly.
Because your point is, you can't find a used one.
But if you sell to the voter that you're going to buy a new piece of equipment, how do you go and buy something that's five years old?
Yeah, no, I agree with that, too.
Because if you're going to make that argument with roads, you're going to make that argument with a vehicle. Somebody's going to say, wait a second, I thought we were buying something brand-new.
You said the chief doesn't want a new vehicle? I'm struggling with that. If the chief doesn't want it, I might have gone, then why are we doing it?
Okay, but, well, we're back to, we're back to the same issue we are before. Every department would prefer something new. I think the chief's concern is, relative to the other needs now and in the future in this department, he did not feel comfortable asking for a new vehicle here, you know? Because we need bigger-ticket new vehicles than a utility truck. And, you know, psychologically, sort of having, you know, people say, oh, well, you know, we took care of your truck this year. You know, we're also aware of the other big-ticket items we have on here, particularly for the air packs. That's mission-critical. There's no, we don't have discretion. That has to happen, you know?
I wonder why that's even a warrant?
Because we need to, we need to release the money from the fund balance. Unless you happen to have $140,000 floating around somewhere. I mean, that's the problem with that. So, you know, and I think that's the issue that the chief looked at, is, in the grand scheme of capital needs, this is, we need to replace the utility truck, but hard to make the argument for new.
Why can't we make a warrant for 20, up to $20,000 to purchase the same type of vehicle, through state surplus?
We just don't know when we can get it, though, as far as...
Up to 20?
Yeah.
So... The thing is, I'd hate to appropriate money that you... I follow what Steve's saying. I think that it might be an up to figure with...
Yeah, there is no such thing as an up to, though. You have to...
Well, I understand, but I mean...
Unless it's coming out of fund balance, you could do it, because it's not going to...
The thing is, if the intention is to get a used vehicle, then certainly, I'm not...
Do we have any history on what kind of, you know, we're looking at an F-550. That class truck available in the auction model? Have we seen them there? Has, have we seen them there, we just didn't have the money? Or, I know we've had the bigger trucks, obviously, the tempers and stuff like that, that's how we benefited from those, but have we seen any of these vehicles on the auction block? And what kind of shape are these things in? Because these trucks are typically the everyday drives, right? So, that means they're driven around hard and all day long versus the bigger trucks are, you know, winter and they'll do some maintenance, stuff like that, but to me, it's a different driving pattern then.
Let me ask another question here. We need a 550 compared to the vehicle we have because this tank is bigger?
No, the-
Wait, the water, I think.
It's, it's the weight of the tank, it's the weight of the tank when filled with water.
Well, wait a second. We used to have a tank that was filled with water before on the same chassis, correct?
Still had, yeah, it had problems.
And, and we got a new tank, no-
It's a whole new skid unit that they-
The tank's the same, it's just got to be built.
The bed went away and they, they, they built this, like, skid unit.
It used to be inside the truck bed.
And it has toolboxes on it, and now, so it's heavier than the regular bed.
All right, I'm trying to understand the reason why we've grown, outgrown the use we had and needed a new one today.
Because they added, like, in the new unit, I believe they've added a toolbox structure on either side, plus the tank. So, they, the, the new skid is bigger than the old one?
It's bigger, but we, what they did was with the old unit, the pickup truck could only hold the unit. There was no room for any tools, no chainsaws, it was very, you know what I mean? So, what they did was they removed the bed, which I believe was rotten anyway, right?
Yeah, the bed was gone, so.
So, and they created this, now, now we have compartments for our chainsaws and stuff like that.
All right, what's the board's pleasure?
I hate to raise $40,000 for something that exceeds the desires of the chief.
The chief specked out the price, right? He, his desire is not the, he's, he does have a need for it, he just says he has other priorities that-
He has a need for the truck, yeah, and it's-
He's looking at other issues of that station, the station-
Purely the struggle for the competed, the competing dollars, that he, it was not something that he was comfortable coming and asking for a new truck.
So, are you saying that he could live with the existing truck?
No. No.
So-
That's why, that's why a truck is being asked for.
Then I, then what you're saying is that he doesn't have a need for that whole type of, um, program?
No.
Because either, either it's a critical issue or it's not, and if it's not a critical issue, then I don't feel, I don't, I don't feel obligated to-
You're, now, now you're twisting my words.
I'm not twisting yours, I'm trying to determine what's the influence of the chief.
The truck needs to be replaced.
The chief says he doesn't want to go with a truck.
Okay, the truck needs to be replaced. In good faith with everything else that the chief was asking for, for the department, he did not feel that adding, asking the added increment for a completely new truck was the way to go.
Then, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that the board of selectmen go forward with a warrant article to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $20,000, which such fund not to exceed will be taken from the, um, general fund.
Fund balance, too.
Uh, fund balance, excuse me, for the purchase of a fire department utility vehicle.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second of this, for discussion. So, we're back to get, looking for a used vehicle and changing our payment method, which is perfectly fine.
My, my theory is this, and I'm guessing at this point, but it sounds like what the chief is saying is he's got far greater needs-
Right.
-than to ask to max out all his wants and desires on this type of purchase. But this is a purchase that needs to happen. So, let's make it happen, but let's not, let's not risk the future of the fire department getting the next thing that they need because we spent too much on one vehicle.
Okay, anything else, anybody else?
I agree with that assessment.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero one. Seeing it's a little past 6:30, why don't we take a quick break from this and we'll open up the floor for public input and then we'll pick up what we left off. Anybody from the public like to speak?
Good evening.
Happy Thanksgiving to you, Chris, how are you?
Thank you, same to you. My, Chris Pasquici, 12th Colonial, my usual disclaimer, I am a member of the Budget Committee, but I'm not here as a member of a Budget Committee, I'm here as a citizen of the town. Um, Mr. Lemire, uh, the last couple meetings, you've been extremely critical and outspoken of the Budget Committee, which by itself is good. Um, I'm an advocate of that, as all elected to serve must be held accountable for their actions. Except it's apparent that your criticisms were not directed towards actions and votes, instead you were criticizing motives and making it personal. You've made comments like the Budget Committee is acting on personal emotions and not in the best interest of the town, that's a quote. You've said the Budget Committee is losing sight of their focus. You've said the Budget Committee lost their mission and during a bout of obvious frustration, you blurted out, what is this Budget Committee, what happened to them? Uh, Mr. Lemire, I'm not sure if you actually watch the Budget Meetings, but you really should before making those comments. I watch these meetings, I attend these meetings, I watch the school board meetings. You're certainly free to attend a Budget Meeting and make those comments as a citizen during their public input, but comments like that, why you are acting as a selectman, are uncalled for, untrue, and do nothing to advance the cooperation between the two communities. I urge you to take the time and watch the Budget Meetings. You're well aware that the voters created the Budget Committee to ask the tough questions and even second-guess the budget that comes from this board. The Budget Committee is doing exactly what the voters expect of them, and they are being respectful of what they do. There are some heated discussions, but it's, uh, well-managed and I, I believe, as a spectator and a viewer, it's going well. The Budget Committee is not there to just be quiet and rubber-stamp a budget, and contrary to what you many times say, every dollar of the Budget Committee is the purview, um, of the Budget Committee. Now, in reference to the IT stipend of $12,000, uh, Mr. Brunel, you, you are correct, this issue has been made personal. However, the people making it personal are the people that are sitting here right now. The five of you want Mr. Brunel to fill this position, period. It has to be Mr. Brunel for $12,000. There was no other option. That's making it personal. Anyone watching the Budget Committee Meetings will clearly see the Budget Committee fully understands the IT budget must be fairly and accurately funded. There's no question about that, I believe, from watching those meetings. They even want you to supply them with a plan for funding, funding this position so they can add the appropriate amount to the budget. The same kind of plan you provide to justify funding for everything else. I am not, again, speaking right now as a Budget Committee member, I am speaking as a taxpayer. Mr. Brunel, as a taxpayer, I really do appreciate the many hours over the years you have volunteered for this town. And Mr. Brubak, you brought up something at the last meeting. I appreciate the time that you've put in. I know you've done construction work and you've done a lot of work outside your role as a volunteer for this town. We all appreciate that. I have volunteered countless hours over the year with field cleanup and work at Darrell Park, and many other taxpayers have volunteered those same countless hours, the benefit of the town, and I thank them all as they have served, uh, served us all and saved us all tax dollars. But, Mr. Brunel, there's a huge difference between a volunteer and an employee. Volunteer all you want until you don't want to anymore, but it is not right to transition from a volunteer position to a paid position without going through a process. That process is as follows. First, wait until you're no longer a selectman. As the Chair of this governing body should not be allowed to hire himself to a paid position. And I know you would abstain from that vote, but some can see we're hiring each other to pay town positions, may appear to be a conflict. I'm sorry no one on the board can see that conflict, but to many in this town, it does exist. Then, the most important part is to describe what the IT position is. We're hearing from $25,000 in Northwood to $60,000 to $70,000, and Mr. Perry, you even said $100,000. What is it? How many hours? How many computers do we have? None of you know that answer, and none of you so far even care to learn that answer because you just want to pay Mr. Brunel $12,000 to do that job, whatever it really is. It may be a bargain, it may not. Nobody knows for sure. You're just randomly picking high numbers and saying we're getting a bargain by giving the job to the chairman. And I, I measured this out, I tried to do it in five minutes, I'm almost done. That's not the way we should be doing things. Please, figure out what this town needs, create a job description, shop it around. That's a process. Banging your fist on the table, accusing the Budget Committee of voting on personality, then trying to find ways to get what you want anyway is not the process we expect. And do you really believe your idea of adding Mr. Brunel's stipend to the budget at deliberative is a good or even wise idea? Is the intention to stack the deliberative with people to get the yes vote on it at the last minute before it goes to the voters during the real voting time on Election Day? It's all about the process. Mr. Byron, thank you for speaking of process when it came to the road agent warrant. I appreciate that. It is about process. Please, follow processes. It does work. Thank you.
Evening Cindy, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Good. Madam Chair.
I actually have a cold, so bear with me. First one of the season. Um, I do also want to bring up, um, the discussion I heard, uh, last couple of meetings that you've had, um, about the IT position and the $12,000 that was in that, that line. It was, um, obvious from the discussion that it was taken personally. And I do, if, if any part of that I had a hand in making it personal and you had a personal friend who, you have my apology. I do want to say that four times in the minutes, I bring it back to the committee and say, this is not about a person, this is about a position. So, I do believe the Budget Committee was discussing a position and not a person. And I do believe that is how we should be budgeting. Aliens could abduct the current volunteer tomorrow, and then what would you do? You need to have a plan. And that was the Budget Committee's concern, is that when we make decisions on, on budget items, we're looking for backup and is the justification there for the, for including this amount of money in, in the budget? And we didn't have the backup, we didn't have the justification, we didn't have a plan that we felt we could support that $12,000 being included in the budget. So, it certainly was nothing personal, and again, I, I also, as Mr. Pasquici noted, the, the comment by Mr. Byron about the process, that's exactly what our discussion was, is about the process. Um, and, and I, I do encourage you to listen to our meetings, I do encourage you to look at our, our minutes because that is exactly what we, we understand, you identified a problem, we're all on board with this, with solving this problem, but we did not see a solution that we could get on board with. And, and I am encouraged by all the discussion, and I know you will come up with a solution and, and that we can all get on board with. So, I did want to bring that to your attention tonight and wish you all a great Thanksgiving and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And happy Thanksgiving to both of you.
Thank you, Cindy.
And your families.
See, Cindy is a lot more pleasant than I am at any time of that day.
Well, you could send her any time.
I mean, much more pleasant, you know, from her than me, I know, I understand.
I'm glad you recognize.
And happy Thanksgiving to you.
Same to you, Chris.
All right, any other public input? Seeing none, we'll close public input at 6:43. So, continuing on in our agenda, see, we left off, we already did road, we, we're not going to talk, we're not going to talk about the paint machine again, right?
Uh, no, I mean, I, I think, um, you know, let me just kind of hit through, uh, we've talked about road improvement, we talked about the 102 intersection, um, air pack replacement. I have not written this article yet, just because this one is fairly complex. Uh, chief was doing some follow-up last week to make sure we were still eligible. We had some concerns about timing for the new aid firefighters grant program and all of this because, um, you know, whether we would be eligible or not for it, so it, he's confirmed that we will still be eligible for it. So, um, you know, it's just how we write this article and how we write that grant because the, the argument, so you know, is we have to do this. And, um, you know, the argument we're making is, hey, we're taking this, uh, full amount out of fund balance to cover it. That, taking that amount out of fund balance, based on what we know now, takes us outside of the recommended amount of fund balance that DRA and then also the government finance officers thresholds, it takes us below that recommended threshold. So, you know, that's part of the grant argument we're making, is we know we're making it, but it is depleting our fund balance to do so. Um, refilling the, uh, Public Works Trust Fund, as we had discussed, uh, human service agencies, um, my understanding still is that the preference was everybody we received a request from, full freight, list that in there, put it in warrant article. Now, the question, and, and I, Apollo, I can't, I can't recall whether we put this to bed or not last time. We also have, like, two, we have requests from agencies we have, that we have not funded before.
I thought we said to stick with the one-
And are, are we putting those in the total or are we only putting in the ones that we funded previously?
I thought we only funded the previous ones.
I agree, I agree with you.
I would leave it the way it is.
Yeah.
I'm not sure I understand what you mean by that, the way the warrant article is-
The way it is right now.
Just, just, just the organizations that we've been doing all along.
Yeah.
So, only the ones funded in the past?
Unless it's any net new, I mean, can we, during deliberative, can we just have it there? Folks want to add it in, they can add it then, I guess?
Uh, my question is, I don't know what, I don't have-
I, I'm, I'm pulling that list up now to, uh, clarify what's in, that's in the-
What are the new requests, is what I'm saying?
Yep, that's, I need to go pull out the, uh, let me go pull out the 2015. Really? Hold on a second. Okay. The requests that are new are, uh, Lamprey Health for $800, court-appointed special advocates for $500, and American Red Cross for $1,500.
We've received American Red Cross requests before.
We have not paid the American Red Cross in the last three to four years.
No, I understand that because we felt that after the stunt that was pulled where they were using 9/11 funds to decide to increase their computer capacity.
Right, so that, so that's the question. I mean, right now, the 26, 735 is everything we received. If we back out the organizations we haven't funded before, um, you know, that, that number goes down by $2,800, so, you know, you're at, at round numbers, call it $24,000 instead of the 26, 735. I also wrote it in such a way that it's the bucket of funds that represents this total, it is not allocating per that article, specific amounts to any one agency.
Right.
Uh, the selectmen can retain the authority to, if that article passes, to adjust the money, or let's say, okay, if it passes and you want to consider the request from Lamprey Health for $800, and you feel it's constructive to have a presentation at some point, you have that presentation.
So, to the point, I guess that we discussed a moment ago, just so everybody's clear, the 26, 735 includes the costs that were requested from agencies we've never-
Correct.
Don't currently.
That is correct.
And I thought we weren't going to do that, so that's my take.
Okay, um, if that's-
I don't know with the rest of the board, I mean, I thought we, we were going to just continue with the ones we've, we've been getting services from and we've been funding over the years. And not handling any net news, that if someone from the floor wants to add a net new, they can add a net new then, but-
Well, I think it would make sense to go that route, but during the discussion at deliberative to hang out there, that we've also received requests from, for example, American Red Cross, Lamp, Lamprey, you know, whatever it is.
Which is not included in the money we're asking for, right? Yeah, so if someone from the floor wants to add it, they can add it, and if no one does, it stays where it is.
So, is that the preference, then? Should I, let me adjust that down to, that's-
Yeah, I think so, I, yeah, I agree.
Okay.
One, two, three. And just during deliberative, when we do the presentation, let us make sure this is everybody at all. And make sure we clearly articulate who's not included and that all are not represented.
Okay.
And make sure we clearly articulate who's not included and at all are not represented.
Anything else on that one? Wage plan, still have the $30,000 in there, as you can see, this is, I have not figured out how I'm writing this one yet.
No, you and I discussed. What I was trying to do is tie this back to what is a total increase in the salaries for non-bargaining unit. And I think you came up with, at my request, a calculation that's between, what, 2% and 3%?
It was, across the body of eligible, yeah, it's 2% to 3%. Or, let's back that out, $30,000, I think it was, what, $30,000 represents 2% to 3%. Yeah, it represents between 2% and 3%. But remember, this is not across the board.
Right, that's the eligible parties that fall into the new plan.
Right.
That get adjusted.
Right. You know, this is very much not an across-the-board cost of living raise.
Well, it isn't a cost of, I think it's more of a leveling.
It is, some people will see larger increases, some people will see smaller increases. If you remember, the plan you approved last year, we have people all over the map that we.
No, but I think it's beneficial to be able to tell the citizens of this town that the increase that you would be seeing by going to this would mean, in relative terms, a 2%, 2.5%. That's all.
Is that something that you think should be somehow woven into the language of the article, or are you thinking more sort of explanation?
I don't have a problem either way.
Okay.
I mean, if you're trying to be more granular, and want to be able to say that that's what it represents, that's fine. But I think at that point, you start to mix the idea of a COLA, which this is not. But having, all I wanted, my point was, all I want to say is, that $30,000 represents 2.5%, 3% of the town's non-bargaining unit salaries. Maybe that's a way to weave it in here, because you stay away from the COLA relationship.
Right.
I don't know if you guys understand what I'm saying.
No, I agree. I think you're still trying, you're trying to work.
I do, and I think it's, I have a tendency to agree, it's an easier way to explain the intent. And, yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
No, that's, that's.
You're okay with what, that's what I think he's trying to figure out.
No, 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 using that sort of as a reference somehow, of this rep, this amount represents 2.5% or whatever it is, you know, I have what the number is somewhere, the 2% to 3% of the eligible wages for non-bargaining unit, non-contracted employees.
Of the total, actually, you'd have to calculate it based on the 15 values, because you'll have people in the changing levels and everything else.
Yeah. Well, then that's where it's based on, because there, the, I have a spreadsheet that I've had to build where everyone is on our current wage scale, where there will be next year. That's how I calculate all those numbers for Personnel Administration. So, this was a pretty easy calculation to figure out after that point, of who was in and who was out. So, okay, I'll keep, as you can see, I'm still trying to figure out how, the best strategy for writing that one. The facility paving articles, the next two, solid waste.
We reviewed those plans last.
Yeah, they're both there. If you're looking at the live document, I did paste in, there are the links, there are links to the proposals we got for both of them.
Do we really think we need to repave that? I mean, I looked at that, I was doing donuts up there and peel outs and everything, it was working fine.
You talking about the solid waste?
Were we not?
Yeah, it's falling apart towards the recycling building.
Mm-hmm.
And, yeah.
So you're not talking a complete repaving of the area?
It's a ground and recover, I thought.
Yeah, yeah, then.
Because they did a lot of.
They did a little.
Patchwork, but you take the tar and you fill the crack, crack fill.
Yeah, they did crack sealing, that was a couple of years ago, I think now. And we did a section or two of patch this year. But this is, this is the full, this is the full lot.
This is the full lot from the fence down to the building.
Yeah.
Okay, fire department?
Fire department, same, same type of thing, and again, the quotes attached in there Did we talk about capital reserve fund management last time?
You brought it up. I don't think we had the wording yet or anything like that.
Okay.
Still don't have the wording.
We still don't have the wording, we have the wording. This is, "To see if the town will vote pursuant to RSA 359A2 to authorize the trustees of trust funds to pay for capital reserve fund investment management services and other expenses incurred from capital reserve funds income. No vote by the town to rescind such authority shall occur within five years of the original adoption of this article."
I expect to get a lot of, huh?
Yeah, I know. I can tell you now.
I read it three times before I even started to comprehend it.
Yeah, so I am figuring already that this will be the one that I get to explain at the deliberative session.
Or the banker.
Right now, with the trustees of trust funds, if they wish to invest our capital reserve funds in anything that has a management investment expense to it, they cannot use the proceeds of those capital reserve earnings to pay for any management fees. Right now, they don't have that, they don't have those type of investments, because, well, one reason is, you can't cover them. If they were to do it now, we would have to raise the money from the general fund to pay for the management fees in the capital reserve. This is a new enabling law that was passed this past year by the House to allow, basically to, the profits from the investments to cover the investment cost. So, the trustees of trust funds have asked for this, not that they have an immediate need for it, but what they are looking at is, as their investment opportunities come up down the road, this gives them one more tool available to, you know, be reasonable trustees of the town's funds, but also perhaps get us a better return on some of those capital reserves they're holding. That last sentence is actually part of the state law, that, and it basically is to protect, you know, usually when you're looking at these types of investments, the trustees would want to enter into a multi-year contract with somebody managing the investment. So, this kind of protects everybody from ping-ponging of a town votes yes one year and no the other year.
Okay, so it's got, it's a five-year lifespan.
Right, exactly. So that's the rationale for doing this, is that, you know, they would enter into a multi-year, a multi-year agreement for that sort of thing.
Tax cap. You're looking for a percentage, aren't you, at this point?
No.
No?
This is just a warrant article to see the sense of this citizen that's.
Yep.
It doesn't allow the tax cap.
I think if I wrote this reflecting what we wanted last time, this is basically, the intention here was, we're saying, hey, shall we present an article next year with a tax cap? And that would mean that if this article were to pass, then your conversation over the coming year is, what's the cap? And then you would present an article with that.
There's certain wording in the state laws that you have to, you have to follow and ought to implement one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, property sale? This.
I thought we got rid of this one already.
No, you try to get rid of it every year, and I resurrect it every year.
I thought we said that we were going to do it last meeting.
It's a different memory, but it's okay.
Oh, because we talked about it.
And I thought we ended it, but I was looking at my notes.
Yeah, I mean, this is one, there's not a.
We should, the board should have this, right?
This gives you an alternate authority, you don't ever have to choose to use this authority. This gives you the ability to operate not outside of just town meeting, which if an opportunity comes up to acquire something or to sell something, and again, since it's outside of tax-deeded, you have that authority under separate law. One of the reasons that suggested this is, you know, we have a handful, not, so far not a bunch, but, you know, I have, I have one sitting in my office right now, trying to figure out how we're going to deal with it. Over the years, particularly through the planning boards, acceptance of roads, we've ended up with, we've ended up with bits of land associated with roads, or drainage, or slope easements. And once we get those, we own them forever until we can go through the exercise of going to town meeting to get rid of them. So, my reason for asking for something like this, and you all to think about this, is really a process that gives the board the authority to dispose of these incidental pieces like that, more than, you know, let's go buy big chunks of land. Alternatively, if not, then what I need to do is, I need to sit down and pull those pieces I know that we own, like these slope easements and all of those, write individual articles for all of them, and then we can have fun explaining each of them at town meeting of why we're trying to unload the land.
Most of them are minute-sized pieces, why would you?
You're right, but once we own them, it does, size doesn't matter. If we own it.
Really?
If we own it, period, we have to go through the town meeting process to own, to get rid of land, whether it's two, you know, two feet or two acres.
But I think what Steve's point is, you're not going to sell these anyways, there's nobody's going to want to buy them.
No, but in some cases, we're just, we can transfer them to the abutting.
You can't just transfer them.
We can transfer them if we have the authority to get rid of the land.
You'd be better served to stop them from being able to accept them.
They have already been, what do I do with the ones that are already accepted? You know, I got a slope easement over on, over off of Juniper that nobody needs, but I, you know, we either need to have a protocol to go through it to get it off of our books, we own it forever, or I have a separate article at town meeting allowing us to dispose of it.
What's the issue if we own it forever? If it's a slope easement, it's nothing anymore.
There's no slope anymore, we don't need it.
Yeah, but Jason's idea is that if you transfer it, whether they want it or not, to the abut, then you can charge them extra taxes on it.
I think that's his idea.
Thanks, but I mean.
I think he's looking for someone who wants to assume it.
But I mean.
You can only do that if they assume it, yes.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a willing party to take over the land that is their front yard, yes, it does add a little taxable value, very little, but, I mean, otherwise, we have all these little squibs of land all over the place. Or if somebody wants to relocate something and we've owned the land, I mean, we came close to this on, I think we managed to figure out a way that it didn't apply, but we had a road where there was a temporary cul-de-sac that then stopped being, that was supposed to go away when it became a through road.
You're talking about Musawa.
Yeah, it was at Musawa. We had a heck of a time sorting out, because at one point, it looked like we, the thought was, we owned the land of the cul-de-sac. Now, if that, these are the troublesome things we have, because when we're deeded land outright for roads, instead of deeded a right-of-way, we end up with, sometimes with stuff we don't need anymore. And that's really all I'm trying to do with this.
You know, my take on this is, and I don't care whether you go forward with it or not, I think there'll be a huge amount of controversy about it for zero gain, because at the end of the day, you're not going to be able to use this for anything. There is no land that we have, with the exception of one or two lots, that you could sell to anybody that they're going to want, or to get rid of. I mean, so I just think it's, you want to do it, that's fine, do it, but I think it's a waste of time.
I agree with Frank.
I mean, then, would you rather I gather up and start doing the little pieces we want to get rid of individually? I need to do one or the other.
There's no reason to get rid of them.
Yeah, I don't understand the motivation, why is there a motive to get rid of it? What's the cost of the town?
We don't, it's space we have, we don't need anymore.
But what's the cost of the town?
There's no cost, other than if it, than to get some of these things off of our books that we own.
But the next time this happens, okay, so we got a 100 by 10-foot strip, for example, sitting over in some development somewhere, and then we say, okay, we're going to get rid of it. Now we got authorization to get rid of it. Now we're going to have to expend money to get rid of it, because we're going to have to cut deeds.
Can't we just transfer it all to the Conservation Commission and make it conservation land?
We have to pay to get rid of it.
Okay, fine.
See, when I sat on the planning board, I remember a few of these things that came through, and they were always giving the land to the town, because it was either for a culvert, or it was wetlands that gave you access to get into the greater-sized wetlands behind it. That was what they were all for, slope easements, things like that. I mean, most of these pieces of land that were given were tiny, tenth of an acre.
If you want to do it, Jason, I'm fine, I'll go forward with doing it. I just don't see a practical application, that's me. In fact, I think it's going to cost the town money, because we're going to have to cut deeds to do this.
Well, I, look, if you want to kill it off again this year, I will stop asking, I promise I will stop asking for the remainder of my career, four times, being told no is enough.
Quick, quick, who wants to go forward or not?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we go forward with this as a warrant article.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I'm going to give him a second.
Okay, seconded. Discussion.
Call the question.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained? Motion fails 1-4-0.
Jason, sorry, I stood up for you.
I, so noted.
Only when he knew.
So noted.
I'm just trying to get this done.
I wanted to make sure.
We're done with warrant articles, unless there's anything else we need to add.
At this point, no, but again, you know, I mean.
Yeah, there is actually a warrant article that I think we may want to consider, but I don't, this could come up as part of a discussion that we're going to have future, further on in the agenda, and that is, we've all been recipients of letters, a letter, I should say, from a legal firm, dealing with.
Oh, I am now.
It should have came electronic, hell yes.
Oh, I got that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the same thing in souvenir hard copy.
Yeah, it should have been.
Yeah, so, the bottom-line audit is, the question I think we want to ask is, what is the opinion of the citizens of Litchfield in terms of that gas pipeline? And that's a, I won't call it a non-binding, but it's a, it'll just give the board a sense as to what people's thinking is on it. But we don't have any information other than what you got here.
Yeah. I'll put a placeholder, because at this point, you don't really even know what kind of question you'd ask, other than, right, so, again, but with that and with the others, you've got plenty of time on these.
I would, and that's, you asked if there was other warrants, that's one. The only other thing I'd like to do at some point, when we get these finalized, is have the ability to go back through them and decide whether we want to take them out of the general fund, or whether we want to do something different with the funding mechanism.
Mm-hmm. Yep. All right. So what I'm going, so what my plan on these is going, is that I will have kind of the repackaging for our use one more time. I want you to do a quick look at them at our next meeting, so we can hand them off to the Budget Committee, because we're due to present to the Budget Committee on the 11th of December, the articles.
Will your next version include all the votes we already taken, so that we know what, how we, that we recommended it and all that?
Sure.
Just because it'll clarify, do we already do this? We've done all these already, so.
Right, I mean, at this point, at this point, I think you've already done all of these, so I just want to make sure that you get one more quick. done all of these, so I just wanna make sure that you get one more quick eyeball on them before we send them to the Budget Committee. Um, I would say that I would prefer that you not do your official vote until a little, until a little bit later in the process, I'd like to get them through the DRA and legal counsel, so what you're voting to recommend or not recommend is actually the real language of the article.
Are they gonna go to the Budget Committee before going to DRA?
Uh, possibly, well, yeah, I can't guarantee that I'm gonna get an answer back prior to that. Um, the content is what the content is, the dollars are what the dollars are.
So, the dollars is what they're-
Okay, I mean, all we're talking here is the way the language is constructed.
Okay. There was also a warrant article that did include money that we talked about a while ago, and that was, um, somewhat building off of the discussion on, um, fire station's future, and doing something, now, there was a discussion we had, whether we use impact fee money for that or not, that's fine, or whether we go with the warrant article, but the question really is, uh, do we want to do something in terms of having an engineering study, and I'm putting engineering study in quotes, um, look at the existing fire station and see what can be done with it to increase capacity.
I thought we already agreed to do that.
Well, that's why I'm bringing it up now, because it's not one of these articles here, and then the question comes out, if it's not an article, how do we fund it?
Uh, yeah.
I'm not sure we can use impact fees for it, is the reason I'm saying.
If you, if you're dealing with the, the existing station-
Correct.
Well, actually, could you-
And-
You can only, you can only charge impact fees for the-
For the growth aspect, right?
For the additional growth that you're gonna be putting on there.
If we're talking about an overall assessment of public safety facility needs, including the old station, but having a slightly broader scope, yes, we can, if the, if the, if the interest is narrower, ironically, if you make it narrower, and do, I just wanna figure out how to retrofit the existing fire station, can probably only use part of the total cost for impact fees, if we back up a step and say, let's look globally at our overall needs assessment, which is, you know, is a plan, I think, that, you know, I presented like two years ago, um, it was-
Is that the, when you presented also the selling town property warrant?
Yeah, y, yes, yeah, I, yeah, you told me no two years ago, but I'm, apparently don't take that well for an answer, I mean, the, the pitch we, you know, I looked at two years ago, was really an overall sort of facility needs assessment, now, again, as our conversations evolved, we tweaked it a little bit to, you know, focus on the fire station site a little bit more, and this site a little bit more, if that's sort of the approach we're taking, if we take the more holistic approach, we can probably do that all with, with impact fees. Um, I can dig out and reshare with all of you the proposal we got before, we'd wanna modify it a little bit, I think, based on how the conversations evolved, but we were looking like $25,000.
So, let's, let's put that on the next, the next week's agenda, then, and if it turns out we gotta do a warrant, we'll do that, manipulate that.
I just, and, I don't know if you just want a list on your document, a placeholder, that's all, just to remind us, as a memory jog on that.
Yep.
Okay, anything else in the warrants? Okay, new business, default budget.
Default budget, all right, hold on a second here, here, um, here's a step ahead of me, okay, uh-
I've got an insurance cost here-
What?
For this, right?
Yeah, I don't have insurance costs, I'll have those, I'll have those that are, hopefully, at our next meeting. Oh, yeah, I, I should have, because they, they expect to have them the first week of December.
So, if I get this right, I mean, the, the current default is still sitting at $5,118,034, no, $5,118,034.
Yes.
And that's without the health insurance adjustments.
Yep, and it's about $75,000 less than where the Budget Committee's proposed budget stands, um, and as you noted, the only other thing I have is inputting new health insurance numbers. Um, again, there's no particular rush in approving this, I wanted to give you some context for articles, proposed budget, as well as see if there's, you have any other comments. Um, eh, this is one where I know in the past, we've looked kind of line item by line item, this is getting tougher and tougher to do, because the last approved budget that, you know, I start from was two years ago, so, you know, line items, some are great, and some are very different than how we've evolved today.
Why would it matter? I mean, you're, you should be starting from the default budget that we inherited last year, in 14.
Right, but-
Because that, that is, quote, "the budget."
It is, but the problem is, when you, I, when you do it, when, on a line-by-line basis, it becomes a little trickier, because you add all those up to equal last year's $5,704,08, but, you know, I have to build, I have to build the next year's budget on a line-by-line basis, so I gotta compare to some line in the past, so I compare to the last, uh, the last approved, the last approved number, so you'll, um, you know, the, the sub-numbers here go $5,700, uh, $5,704,08 for last year, and then this year, $5,118,034. Um-
I don't like your wording on line, uh, 4194 dot 10.
It's in, 4194 dot 10?
Yeah.
What does that say?
Move all gas.
Move all gas, yes.
Could you pick some other type of wording on this, Jason?
Yes, I will, um, I will change the phrasing on that one. Um, there's no guarantee that that will not be how I report it on the default budget worksheet, however.
Okay.
Um, yeah, th, those notes, um, honestly, those were sort of my shorthand notes, because the way I have to report this to DRA is, you know, last year, adjustments up, down, and then it calculates new total, and summary why, and they give you like two lines to explain all of that, so I figured I'd do the shorthand while I was here. Uh, any other questions on that?
Nope.
Okay, so, my take on this, then, is that what I'm gonna do is, uh, when I get the new health numbers, I will plug those in to this, and then we'll have a number, and then at that point, you know, hopefully our first, second meeting of December, we can approve and put this number to bed. Eh, eh, yeah, subject to, if, you know, re, remember, this, this number is not finalized, I think, officially until the last week of January, or some incredibly late date, so, you know, I'd like to, I'd like us to vote and be done with it, but remember that, you know, legally, it's still open to you.
We've shared this with the Budget Committee about, and are they asking for it, Frank?
Yeah, they're asking for it. I don't think it's a, they don't really need it until we can, you know, probably the end of December or something like that, there's no big, there's no big deal on this, simply because, you know, it's, it's an information item only.
It, yeah, it's information, it is the selectman's discretion, so.
All right, anything else on the fall? All right, deliberative session scheduling.
Deliberative session scheduling, um, budget hearing is gonna be January 15th, at 7:00 PM at Campbell High School, for the Budget Committee. Deliberative session can be between January 31st and February 7th, wanted to see if you had any initial preference, so I can confirm schedules with those that need to be there. Um, school, uh, board, I think, discussed briefly at their last meeting, they're trying to figure out, um, when their council is available, um, and, you know, I just observed that the voter preference we had from an advisory article a couple of years ago was to hold both meetings the same day, which we did one year and then skipped a year.
Right, because I think we got a lot of pushback from the Budget Committee.
Right, but the citizens-
I, I know.
Have voted, but that's what they'd like to see.
Okay, so you said July, Jan, January 17th, you said?
There's a one-week window, January 31st to February 7th.
January 31st. So, my sense is that, based on kind of what we've done in the past, that, that the preference is that first Saturday, the January 31st, and then we do, try to make the schedule work accordingly from that, unless you don't wanna do it on a Saturday.
No, I, I don't want to do it on a Saturday.
You know, I, I see, we had a theory a year or two ago, we were trying midweek, and then I think we fell back to a Saturday after getting a little bit of flack, so-
I, I think, several years ago, we tried to do it all on one day, and if I'm not mistaken, didn't the, um, kids, like the high school kids, senior class, try and have like babysitting service, so parents could bring their kids? Somebody else put on a, a spaghetti and meatball dinner, so we could, you know?
There was food there, I don't remember, it was, yeah, yes.
That type of thing, and I think that, you know, takes, makes sense, so, to me, starting in the morning, where you start 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock, I don't care, pick a time, and then, say, go until noon, and then break from noon till 1:00, and have lunch or whatever, and then go back at 1:00.
Who goes first this year?
Uh, I think it's the town.
I think the town does, yeah.
Correct. Because ours is 31st at 9:00.
Right. Well, I mean, the, the, the other thing is, um, you know, we'll navigate, with that preference in mind, I'll see what I get back from the school, on what their council availability is, and what our-
The, the Budget Committee is asking for what the deliberative rate of the-
We tell them January 31st to listen here, otherwise.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we're, we're aiming for January 31st, and we'll go from there. Okay?
Starting at 9:00, or starting at 10:00, something like that.
We'll see, yeah.
Yeah, figure it out, okay.
Um, just while we're on budget meetings on that, by the way, the budget hearing is gonna be January 15th at 7:00 PM.
I add that to the town calendar when I heard of the meeting, so, it's already up there.
Same night as ours. We can't win.
Nope.
Oh.
Anything else on the deliberative?
Nope.
Other items, we've already kinda talked about the Kid, Kidder Morgan Pipeline, but what else do you wanna add to that?
Uh, just that, to clarify that, you know, we received, um, I guess, two Fridays ago, um, some, you know, an initial piece of information discussing, um, Tennessee gas pipelines, proposal to run a (cough) gas pipeline through, um, an existing, uh, electric, uh, right-of-way, which comes through, uh, comes through Litchfield, this is a, uh, overall pipeline that is, uh, bringing natural gas from north-central Pennsylvania across to, uh, Drake, Mass.
Is this, um, I don't know if you know, it comes through the right-of-way under the country club, or?
I believe that's what it, what it looks like, right now, um, you know, we have, I have the same flimsy maps that you've seen, I have nothing, I have nothing further at this point, um, when we received this (cough) on the 14th, first, I think most, or any of us, and I know my co, not my colleagues, had all sort of caught us by surprise, um, and it was shown as an alternative, there, the preferred line was a line through some towns, um, in northern Massachusetts, um, if you follow kind of the political winds, it, this, the routing through Massachusetts has not necessarily been warmly received, um, so it appears that in the two weeks interim from this letter, um, the New Hampshire route has now (cough) become the preferred route in that area, um, with a, um, ultimately, this ends up going to Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, uh, FERC, so there's, you know, there's a good amount of federal review and paperwork that ends up happening with these sort of things, so it's, we're still very early stage at this point, I've shared with you what I know so far, um, I think the week after Thanksgiving, I've heard from, um, the, um, their local, um, contact, who through, uh, McLean Law Firm, Joel Maola, um, wants to come by and have kind of an initial first meeting-
With the board, or?
Uh, with me, um, and any other individual board members who may be interested, because he's doing it first thing in the morning, and then to sort of talk about what the public game plan will be after that. Um, I also understand from, uh, Tom Young, our rep with, uh, National Regional Planning, that they, um, have offered to convene a regional meeting to gather some information discussions, so there aren't all of these little, all of us aren't reinventing the wheel so many different places.
Uh, the, it may make better sense for National or Regional Planning to have not, not one regional meeting, but several regional meetings.
And, well, and, and, you know, again, there's a couple different layers of this, I mean, the, the, there's, there's a layer where sort of, you know, we all need to get a more functional understanding of what's being proposed, which may be, you know, something they could do regionally, and then there will be that evolution of, I'm sure we're gonna have plenty of residents that are concerned and have questions one way or the other, we can't expect to know all of those at the beginning, and that perhaps is a different meeting than us being sort of initially educated on all of this, uh, you know, like I, my sense is, this is kind of a, this ends up being somewhat of an evolutionary piece of, there are the issues associated with it, you know, I barely understand kind of the regulatory issues associated with this, I don't know what we have, what say we have and don't have in this yet.
That's why I think-
Yeah.
You know, the National Guard option is-
Yeah. So, there's a lot of learning we have to do on this.
So, back to Frank's also suggestion earlier, too, was the warrant article to ask the voters, what do they, you know, what do they want us to do, or, do, you know, what's their, I guess, position, but?
Um, I, and, you know, as we learn more ourselves, and as we start hearing from the community, that may make sense, um, the trick is going to be, you know, w, do we know enough by the end of January to write something that lends itself to a, a helpful advisory yes-no question? I don't think we can do, say what that is today, but maybe we'll, you know, hopefully we'll learn enough by that timeframe to do that.
Well, I think if we get to the point where we have to, we could simply send them a, um, a message that says, we are putting this on a warrant, and any information you can provide us to present, a true and public picture, and transparency, bring transparency to this, would be more than welcome.
(laugh)
And I, I would imagine that they would respond to that, although I don't know.
Yeah.
I do also understand that, um, one of the candidates for Speaker of the House has already stated that we're all gonna have to, you know, give up some things and, and make this happen.
I think it was the successful candidate.
No, he's not Speaker.
The Speaker said that this, we'll take paper this morning.
Bill O'Brien is not Speaker.
Not yet.
He is, he-
He, he is the nominee of the Republicans.
Fine, he's gonna be the Speaker, you know?
So, the two, and then the other side of the portion note, too, is we did get contacted by the meeting leader, in which Jason and I got contacted, and you responded back with, the board has just been made aware of it, and we've taken no position at this point, so.
Well, I'm not saying we have to take a position.
Yeah.
All, all I'm saying is, you know, um, I would like to see us get as much information as we can before we take a position, and I would also like to see us, if it makes sense, once we get that information, go forward with a warrant article, asking, here's the facts, here's what we know, and let the citizens go through that, because the only place I can see them putting that has gotta be a power line that cuts all the way across Litchfield.
Isn't there, isn't there like one?
There's more than one.
There's like two, I thought, yeah.
There's at least, there's, there's at least two, there's one at the Cummings, right? And there's one up at north.
And there's one across, mm, there's another one, that's too far up north, though, they're not looking at that one.
All right, some more to follow, I, well, you know, the other things, I wanna avoid the whole, we have a prison moving and a town issue, too, where people are-
Yeah, I know.
We need to get as much information as we can out there, I guess, at some point.
Yeah, and, you know, and I think, um, you know, I think that's, that's the other piece, too, on this, is that, you know, this is, this can be a big deal, um, you know, I think there's all sorts of potential questions people may have, you know, and we, we always ask for, let us know if you have questions, you know, more than anything else on this one, um, you know, email them, call them, send them, and it just, it's, it's one of those things that this, there's kind of a wide scope of issues with it, and there's a lot of- of issues with it, and there's a lot of, based on what I've been able to read over the past two weeks about the Massachusetts discussion, there's a lot of information and misinformation out there.
Yeah, so, just-
And so-
Take the facts.
You know, so, sort of helping our residents figure out what the issues are would be helpful, and what their, and figuring out their questions are will be good, so.
I did get a letter from a concerned citizen. The letter stated that they would like to see us as a board, similar to apparently, from what that individual says as to what Hollis did, um, take a, um, make a resolution that states that the Board of Selectment would take any and all actions appropriate to oppose the grant of regulatory approval before federal, state, or regulatory agencies. But-
But, which's too early to?
I didn't, I'm just saying that I got this email, and that's all.
Okay. Keep close to it, I guess. All right, next. So, we need to finally, um, just read that contract for the captain, right?
Yep.
And we just need to, we've already agreed to everything, I think we've made the one modification, we just gotta vote it.
Right.
Some move, Mr. Two.
I have a motion to approve the contract with Captain Donnelly. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Discussion.
Yeah, I have a problem with the contract, so I will be voting against it.
Okay. Which contract? Oh, I know, what is the problem with the contract?
Well, first off, my feeling is that the contract should have mimicked the contract of our Chief of Police and not necessarily the, uh, union contract. Secondarily, um, I also have problems with, uh, I, I have problems with the, um, procedure that was used to bring this contract in front of the board, I'll put it to you that way.
Further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Obsteined? Motion carries four z- uh, four one zero. All right. Next is Selectmen Reports. Mr. Bork, anything to report?
Only thing I would like to say is, uh, congrats to, uh, Campbell High School for state championship this weekend, and, uh, that's about it. Also, I attended the, uh, the play on Saturday night that Campbell had, and it was outstanding, so I don't know if any of you had, uh, a chance to do that this weekend, but good job to both.
Yep. Mr. LeMire?
Um, I also'd like to extend congrats to Campbell, and I also would like to, probably on behalf of the board, wish all our residents and their families happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Absolutely.
And members, my fellow members of the board.
Thank you, same to you.
And staff.
Thank you.
Same to you, and everybody else. Um, I, just, I, I was obvi- I was at the Bo game when they won Bo, I was at the state game, so they did a fab- fabulous job, I've been at every home game, and I was amazed that the team just trumped everybody. So, you know, congratulations to them, and, you know, happy Thanksgiving to all the families out there. Mr. Byron?
Yeah, there was a Budget Committee meeting held on, uh, November twentieth, and several actions were taken by the Budget Committee, so Jason, if you can pop open your budget, so when I reference, I just record the numbers, so if you can, what it was and stuff, that would be much appreciated.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the meeting started off with a, uh, presentation, an executive presentation for the school budget, because the Budget Committee is now starting to move into the school, um, budget itself, and they'll pick that up after the, uh, holiday. And a tour was given, uh, of the school. Um, going down further on town business, um, on, um, the town valuation, I provided the Budget Committee with the valuation that was worked out by Jason, as well as, uh, Kevin Lynch, and if I'm not mistaken, that went up four point-
Six point one.
Excuse me, it, it went up six point one million dollars in terms of total valuation to a new town valuation of eight hundred and twenty-nine million, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. Um, also, on the budget, we went through, um, insurance, forty-one ninety-six, and at Jason's request and suggestion, we adjusted that number to match what his true numbers were. On police department, forty-two ten dot one, line seven sixty, which is-
Which is cruiser purchase.
Cruiser purchase, that was decreased by two thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars to one hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars.
And that, was that based on a recommendation from us?
Yes.
It wa- it was based on a question we've received, and, and we gave them facts back. But, um, the, the context for that-
I knew the answer, I just-
Yeah, e- exactly, I, I wanted to make sure everybody knew. You know, the context for that was when, uh, when we initially proposed the vehicle, I think, uh, you know, that, we, we had proposed one cruiser and then one sort of s- different vehicle for detail, and then this board decided, hey, just get two cruisers, um, and switched them out, and we adjusted the numbers, but it didn't, and, but, you know, Chief and I, it didn't dawn on us to go back and say, "Wait a minute, we don't, there's some stuff when we take a cruiser and turn it into a detail vehicle that we don't have to, we can swap over." That's what the twenty-two hundred dollar change represented.
Yeah, uh, there, there was a question on that, uh, by a member of the Budget Committee, asking, "What was the particular equipment that was deducted out?" So, I don't know, I didn't have that information on the email that you sent me.
Well, the radio stays, the case stays in there.
It-
The radio stays in, the wigwags, of course, would stay in.
A lot of the support gear will come out.
Yeah, I, um-
In other words, the, the question really was centered around, if it costs us twelve thousand dollars to outfit a cruiser, and we're only taking out two thousand, what, what the heck is staying?
Okay, so, oh, so, so now they want the list of everything that's staying, because I did send you what came out.
No, you didn't.
Yeah, um, but, that's okay.
I can show you the email, and all that you said is the, the number was a hundred and five thousand, seven eleven.
To, to, to answer, to, to answer what comes out, um, the, uh, the prisoner transport cell, um-
Which is the cage, right?
Which is the cage, seventeen hundred, fifty-three dollars, sixty cents, the dual weapon vertical mount, three hundred, fifty-three dollars and sixty cents, the cargo caddy for three hundred dollars, the stinger light for one twenty-one seventy-nine, so removal and transfer will add about three hundred dollars. So, you take some out, but then it costs you a little to swap them between.
Right.
So, that's where that, that's where that total came from.
Okay, that helps, thank you.
Mm-huh.
Um, there was also a question on the police budget for lines one-ten and one-eleven as to why we're giving people six point two percent salary increases. Um, I explained that that's really not what's happening, but easiest way to show it, and rather than get into a, a discussion on it at the meeting, I've asked Jason to put together a list of the officers and what their increases are and stuff, and that should address that question. Line one forty-four.
Uh, court overtime.
Court overtime was decreased by four thousand, uh, decreased to four thousand dollars. Line one forty-nine.
Overtime training.
Which was training overtime, was decreased to twenty-nine thousand dollars, which is a deduction of five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Uh, there was a proposal on line three forty-nine.
That's, that's where we moved the child advocacy center back in.
That was the advocacy center, which was put into the police budget, I think the board remembers that, because that's who uses that, or that helped. There was a motion to go to zero that out, that failed, and there was also a motion to increase it to twenty-five hundred dollars, that failed as well. Uh, on the count forty-two ten dot five, there was no changes.
That's police support, so that's the dispatch function.
On forty-four eleven dot two, mosquito, there were no changes. On forty-four fourteen dot one, animal control, no changes. On li- library, forty-five fifty dot two, it was decreased to, uh, um, to two hundred and two thousand, six eighty-nine, and it was felt that that was a decrease to, uh, use the new price of oil that was, uh, going through the budget. On forty-four, forty-four fifteen, health, there was no changes. Parks and Rec, there was no changes, although they are looking to understand what they're gonna do for the, um, mowing contract, well, that's needed. And on forty-three twenty-one, we want to, that's the, um-
Which is solid waste, yep.
Waste, on line six ninety-three and six ninety-four, which are the, um, the dumpsters.
Mm-hmm.
We wanna have an estimate as to what's gonna be spent for the rest of the year.
Yep.
And that was it. The, uh, as I said before, the budget hearing date is set for January fifteenth, seven PM at, uh, Campbell High, and they are looking if we can get an understanding as to what the deliberative date will be.
Can we, should we send a note to the Budget Committee, to the Chair, letting know that we're shooting for the thirty-first, and see if there's any objections on their side at all at this point?
Um, I, I don't see why we have the rush, I think our rep can bring it up at the next meeting, and between now and then, if I get better information from council, I'll make sure our rep knows and can report that.
The next meeting is, um, December, I don't know, it's on-
Fourth, right.
Are you still on the, the schedule?
The next meeting of the Budget Committee is December second. Um, our next meeting is December eighth, I think I said?
Yeah.
So-
Right, but, I mean, you, you guys have given me direction tonight as to what your preference is, so now it's working out the schedule with the school, our council, everyone else.
And I was only suggesting letting the Chair know, this-
Yeah.
So that she's aware that that's the date we're shooting for, but, so she can kinda telegraph it down to the rest of the members. Um, there's also a meeting coverage issue, we need to cover the sixteenth, right?
Right, on December sixteenth, which is the Tuesday, I will be out of town.
Is there any member that can fill in for that day?
I won't be physically able.
You won't be what?
I won't be physically able.
That's right.
I'm having my surgery that day.
I think you should, you'll be able to paint those, we'll be able to-
All right, well-
It's way north, wouldn't you?
Yeah, I know, yeah, I know Brent's out, and it looks like I may be out because of, um, a business meeting I have that day, but.
At least it's a Kevin Bork.
Kevin, what do you go? It's Tuesday the sixteenth.
January sixteenth?
December.
December sixteenth?
It's gonna be the school budget at that point, I think, so.
Yeah, town business should be done.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just making sure I put it in.
All right, so-
Sixteenth.
You can let them know that it's filled, well.
Actually, let me check something before we say that.
It should be school. Sped, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, right, right now, I have a hold-a-date meeting on my calendar for my boss, so, I'm sort of stuck at this point.
Time's at seven?
Yeah, in the resource room. Okay. Anything else, Frank?
That's it.
Mr. Berry?
Um, at the rec meeting, rec commission meeting last time, the opening of the bids for the mowing contract was done. At that time, um, everyone on the committee decided that they would review the bids, and we would bring back questions to contact the bidders at the following meeting, which is tomorrow night, and then from there, the contract will probably be awarded the following meeting, which will be two weeks from tomorrow, which will probably be right around that sixteenth timeframe.
Good.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's about it.
All right. I think that brings us to the bottom of our agenda. There was no items moved from consent, and there was no other, none, any other business added to the agenda, so.
Move to adjourn, Mr. Two.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn.
Can't we talk and just-
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obsteined? Motion carries five zero zero. Again, for those folks still watching, have a great Thanksgiving, uh, and enjoy the time of your families.
Enjoy your holiday.
And let's hope it's not gonna snow.
Oh, please.
Please.